Full business, minutes of the last meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I've read them, so I can approve them.
Okay, going on to council meetings. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you Chair. So there's three topics under council meetings. The first one is the November 16th council meeting. There is a conflict that evening, so I am recommending that we move that meeting to the daytime at 10:00 a.m. We already have one scheduled as it's part of our budget process that morning. So I just wanted to make sure that no councillors have any issues with that, and then we can certainly notice it and get the communication out to the public.
Is that me? Is that okay? Or? Okay, all right, we'll do that.
All right, thank you. The second item, I know I talked to councillors individually. Normally this time of year, there is a little break in council meetings to give councillors some time off. And so one that's recommended is to have a break from all council meetings starting next Monday, the week of August 30th, as well as the week of September 6th, which is Labor Day.
Are we in favor of that? I am.
So a related issue to that, I think I had maybe missed, but intended months ago to put in for a week of vacation. I have an annual backpacking trip with a group of friends that I've been doing for many decades, and that is the week I will be gone. So the point I was making here, I may have messed up and not notified the Chair. I make it a habit of notifying the Chair and the manager. Anytime I have a planned absence, I think it's important to have some internal rules regarding that. So anyway, I hope to be gone that week anyway, so it works out for me.
Great. Just following on to that, I think it really is important that councillors let the manager know, but also let me know if they're not going to be available for meetings, or if they're taking time off. And I don't know, maybe in our, when we reinstate rules and procedures, et cetera, we may have a conversation about about absences and, you know, if they're kind of exceeding normal normalcy, I guess I would say. So, but I do appreciate hearing from you when you're not going to be able to be here. We did have one meeting recently that had to be canceled because there was not a forum, and I didn't, I had no idea that there wouldn't be a forum. So I appreciate councillors letting us know, so that both staff and all of us can make plans accordingly. So, thank you. I did get your notice, Gary, when we spoke about about this. So, thank you for that.
Okay, so is there any other concerns with having the next two weeks off? Okay, and then the third item under council meetings, we did, or the council did choose at the end of July to extend only having the public access through either CVTV, through WebEx Online, so continuing remote, and that was extended through the end of August. So at this time, this is our last meeting in August. I just wanted to circle back with the council to see if you desire to continue the remote access due to the uptick in our COVID cases in the community.
I believe that we should extend the remote access. And I also feel like it should be evaluated on a month-to-month basis, rather than just having it roll along, because things hopefully may change, and hopefully will change. But for now, I think having the remote access is important to protect the public and ourselves.
Other comments?
I agree with that.
Okay. I think, I think it's important that we always maintain the ability to, and when I say always, because because I think it's been made easier for some people to attend remotely of the public. I think that should also be something that we allow in the future, even when we are meeting together. So that said, I know that we are hearing from people that are a little disturbed that we continue to meet remotely. I would like to meet in person, however, I don't like the idea of meeting with a mask on and trying to speak with a mask. I mean, so, and now the Governor has stated that everybody has to make, wear a mask, vaccinated or not, when we're indoors, and we certainly would be indoors. So I think, I think I'm in agreement with doing it, and I agree with councillor Bowman that it should be revisited every month. I'm hoping this will pass, this capacity issue with hospitals, et cetera, and that that we will come out of this this extra little surge here very soon, so that we can meet together, you know, allow the public to come. I think they feel like they get more attention that way, and I don't blame them. But I do think at this point in time that we should allow for for us to do this remotely, at least through September, and then revisit it at our last meeting of the September council meeting. Okay?
I've just got a comment. Having been a councillor only since January 1, I've experienced only remote meetings. And I gotta tell you that there is no shortage, in my opinion, of communication with constituents. And so if any constituents feel that way, I would just encourage them to email us. And that's very easy to do from the website, you know, from online. And we pay attention, we communicate about constituent needs all the time. And I know that someday I'm going to be able to experience the in-person, and I do look forward to that. But for right now, there really is no shortage of meeting constituent needs.
Thank you councillor Bowman. I understand what you're saying. I do think actually that public meetings are more effective, especially, for instance, when we had the equestrian issue come up. We had two of those meetings. There was no, there was standing room only in both hearing rooms. And I think that the number of individuals that come, take the time to come to the council and speak about their grievances does make a point. And so I think that's partly what people are talking about. They can do this remotely. And we invite that. In fact, if there are, you know, if we have an issue that really is, you know, a controversial issue, we should be allowing as much public comment as possible. They would still have the three minutes, you know, that is allotted to the public when they come and testify. But there is just something about people being there in person, and especially when there are a large number of people about an issue, whether they, whether they speak or not. Because not all of them spoke, but they were in force. So it shows you there is an interest. And so, you know, that would be the only difference. I do say, we do get emails, we do have communication. And so I think that we are addressing individuals' needs, but at the same time, I think there's a slight difference. And frankly, as the Chair, sometimes I don't have a gavel in my hand. And sometimes, sometimes that personal dais situation is a little bit more controlled than than this remote thing. So anyway, there are reasons for both. And certainly right now, I think it's probably just fine that we do this one more month, and then revisit it at the end of September. So it looks like we have agreement, Kathleen, on that.
Madam Chair, one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I do want to highlight here as well, and we did on one-on-ones discuss Lake Vancouver, and I'm hoping we can do a work session on that. Besides being able to give personal meetings or in-person meetings for constituents, you know, the pandemic has put constraints, everything from working on the equestrian code. But meetings like Lake Vancouver and Lackamas Lake, I really hope for staff and entities from the state and county and municipalities would sit around a table, because we have gaps in jurisdiction, we have overlapping jurisdiction. We have the ability to basically say, that's not a county issue, that's an ecology issue. Or that's not an ecology issue, that's a city of campus issue. And two, we can get people in the same room and sit around. And so people can't point the finger somewheres else where we can have face-to-face discussion. I mean, we're missing an aspect of in-person meetings from staffing to meetings with our constituents. I, you know, we need to press that issue and keep up on it every month, as conditions might change, because governance is really constrained a bit. Zoom meetings are not a panacea.
Thank you. Okay, I think, does that cover the council meetings? Kathleen?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Let's move on then to item 1.3, ARPA funding requests.
So council departments and offices did submit some ARPA funding requests. I will summarize the ones that are being recommended today. The first one being Superior Court. Due to the pandemic, Superior Court's ability to hold criminal and civil jury trials was significantly limited. This request of $75,000 is to hire a consultant to advise on docket and trial scheduling strategies to address the backlogs. And what I think I'm going to do today is I'll go through the whole summary. I do have my colleagues on today. If there's specific questions that I can't answer, they will be available at the end. Community development, building safety. Community development was able to continue services safely during the pandemic by providing virtual appointments and inspections and other necessary meetings. This request is really to support the staff's effort to engage with the community and be proactive in providing current and future customers information and access to what their available resources are in the future. Also in community development for $41,000 is the ergonomic assessments and equipment for staff working directly with customers. This includes sit-down desks, ergonomic keyboards, cameras for virtual meetings, and other areas in order to provide the best service that they can. Information technology, this request is about $1.2 million to provide funding for a cybersecurity program beginning in 2022 for three years. There's three areas to this request. The first is the cybersecurity analyst project position. This position will provide additional monitoring, research issues, help implement, training, and policies across all departments. Also ensure the IT resources are following and implementing security best practices. As you know, security, internet security is a high risk in any organization, especially now that we're remote as well. The second part of this is renewing cybersecurity monitoring for three years. The software is critical to being able to identify vulnerabilities in our infrastructure and respond to issues accordingly. And then finally, renewing services for an additional three years. It's a monitor detection response service. This allows a 24/7 service and gives the county access to stable cybersecurity resources. District Court, they have a couple of infrastructure, information systems, infrastructure requests. The first one is replacing desktop computers with laptop and docking stations in an amount of $50,000. The second is requesting Zoom and Polycom licensing for three years. This is to assist with limited exposure to COVID-19. District Court is strongly discouraging participants from appearing in person, and the preferred method is Zoom. The second one is the Justice AV Solution, or JAV, for just over $300,000. The upgrades needed in high-definition video and voice recording during courtroom dockets and hearings, ports for evidence sharing, and improved quality for Zoom video. And finally, two video interpreter arraignment booths in an amount of just over $2,000 to purchase and set up two virtual station booths next to the courtroom for the use by individuals who do not have the ability to access the courts virtually. The next request is from Public Health. The first one is also an information system infrastructure replacement of electronic medical records software platform for $2.5 million. The more advanced new technology will support real-time access to broad data sets via the Health Information Exchange. The replacement of this software is imminent, as the current system end life is in 2022. The second information system infrastructure is replacement of environmental public health client permitting software platform in just over 1.7 million. The system will provide effective data systems to assess impacts of the pandemic on work trends, revenue projections, and staffing. The current system is also near end-of-life, and the vendor will no longer be providing support. Comprehensive COVID after-action review consultant. This amount is $200,000. This is a consultant to facilitate the after-action review of the COVID-19 pandemic. I have been told many times, this is a once-in-a-hundred-year event, so this is not a normal small, I'm not gonna say the measles were small, but having this after-action review is more complex than a normal review. This includes several stakeholders, including the state, FEMA, the medical community, and many others. Ongoing COVID-19 pandemic response efforts in an amount of 2.5 million. As the pandemic continues, this will help provide ongoing support. With this request, there would be approximately $4.5 million returned to the general fund that was earlier earmarked for the ongoing response. Enhanced Clark County Public Health Emergency Response Readiness in the $650,000. My recommendation on this is to review this as part of a countywide emergency response readiness. I do think it's important that we have staff who are trained and ready to go to respond to any type of emergency response in Clark County, whether it's a health pandemic, earthquakes, or other areas. So I would like to have this part of a larger review, and not necessarily approving this at this point, but letting you know that this may come back in front of the councils, a countywide effort. Disease reporting technology of $250,000. Food safety work volume backlog for $375,000. Due to the pandemic, restaurants were closed, and therefore a lot of our health inspections were not done. This is going to help get them back up to pace, and so we can get rid of the backlog due to the delay. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training and Plan Development of $150,000. This one I'm also not recommending right now, but have it be part of the countywide effort in which I'm working on RFPs that will actually review all of our current policy and procedures within the county, both internal and external services, and provide a framework on how to move forward. Medical Examiner's Office Space Needs, $133,000. At this time, I'm also not recommending this as a standalone. We do have a countywide space needs analysis, and I think this would be a good fit in that space needs. I did learn that, it sounds like the Medical Examiner's Office used to be a tavern prior to the medical examiner, so they've been, you know, working within a building that certainly was not built to be an MEO's office. Financial assistance for onsite septic systems permitting and operations and maintenance of $1.5 million. Financial assistance for upgrade on repair of two-party or Group B community water systems of $150,000. The total being recommended in the public health is just over $8 million. And again, does not include the emergency response readiness, diversity, equity, inclusion, and the Medical Examiner's Office space needs. And it also would include returning some, about $4.5 million back to the general fund. Internal Service, this is to provide budget capacity for continued work on space needs of about $2 million. As you remember, you approved a contract last week with Ming. They will be reviewing the space needs and identifying best use for the space. This is going to be taking it to the next level of hiring engineers, construction, furniture, relocation costs, et cetera. This is just a placeholder. All future conversations will happen with the council. The County Managers Indigent Defense, this is to address the case backlogs, increase additional contracts for indigent defense attorney services, and add a project position of an office assistant. This is an amount of 1.4 million. We currently do have a temporary right now that's working as an office assistant, so this would continue that service as well. There's a couple other items that were submitted that are on hold right now. Contract Management System, this was a result of the audit that was done on contract management. This will either be coming through through the budget process, and then, because there were some ongoing costs that were associated with this, and the ARPA funding is not intended for ongoing costs, it's intended for one time. Another item that may be coming back before the council is security at Public Health. We've been able to move resources around to address that. This may not be in need this year. Staff's still doing some more work on that, but it may be coming back to the council. Community Development also provided a couple requests that I'm putting on hold for the moment. One was a new software for the CCLMS project, and it's for code administration and animal control. I'm looking at this project as its entirety. So during the budget process, I'm going to be bringing back the staff reports that support the entire project instead of isolated projects, so that will be coming back. The second one is laptops and docking stations in community development. While I do support this, we're assessing the needs with the pandemic, but Public Health does have a number of laptops that are fairly new, that if the pandemic, and when the pandemic stops, they will no longer need those. So we could actually repurpose those laptops to community development. So we're still looking at timing and seeing how, what our resources look like. And there were a couple requests that came forward that are not presented today due to the fact that they don't meet the ARPA funding request. All approved requests for ARPA funding will be budgeted in the Fund 1041, which is the American Rescue Plan Fund. This fund is managed by the Auditor's Office, and all projects, expenses, and monitoring will be overseen by the ARPA project manager. The Budget Office is also working directly with the Auditor's Office to ensure that the council-approved requests for funding are accurately represented in the 2021 Fall Budget Supplemental and the 2022 Annual Budget. And then finally, all funding requests are estimates and placeholders for requested projects. These estimates will be fully vetted and validated prior to the actual expenses being approved. So I did want to make sure that that was known, because there's, certainly we have to go through public bid processes on some of these, so the numbers may change a little bit, and so these are just really earmarked as a placeholder at this time. If there's any specific questions on any of these, I can either answer them, or my colleagues online can also provide information.
Are there questions of council on these? So Madhvi?
Madam Chair, thank you. I don't know if it kind of comes under councillor communications as well, but it dives directly into this, because I didn't see a placeholder regarding a food bank initiative. I had separate conversations with LULAC and also the NAACP. And one of the initiatives is regarding the food bank is, you know, we don't have a whole lot to do with that. From community services and public health, there are some tangential roles, but especially the NAACP has asked for a meeting with all the nonprofits, providers, as well as the users, to get healthier foods and easier access within the instrumentals that are already in place. And that's moving forward. I heartily agree with the President of NAACP. That needs to happen. So we've had some emails in that regard, and so I'm hoping that moves forward. But on the other hand, I didn't see a placeholder, because I think there is an immediate need for a separate program for the Latino community, and LULAC is supporting that. And I had requested and sent in to Mark, hey, can we get a placeholder for $100,000 to have a separate food bank for the specific needs that were expressed by that community? I didn't see it mentioned anywhere. Maybe I missed it, and I'm hoping that that continues.
Yeah, I can certainly address that. So on September 15th, when you return for your first council time after your break, I will be coming forward with some proposed options on an internal committee for the external support and grants process coming in. So that would be addressed during that time. This is only from departments and offices, not for external funding.
Okay, super. So then my only general comment is, you know, I want actionable items. I really am very leery of hiring consultants to do additional studies. You know, those studies are great, and that contract we just approved last week or two weeks ago. You know, we need specific uses for this precious money that will have concrete capital improvements. So we need to be very cautious with money that we spend on consultants, and look forward to engineering and actual construction plans.
To follow up on that, if I may, I had two questions. One of them deals with that Superior Court request for a consultant to advise on their docket and their backlog. Why in the world would a consultant be asked to do that, rather than it being done in-house by the people who know?
And I'll have to see if Superior Court is on this morning, but they do have a turnover in their administrator. So they're, they have a very small staff that work in the office. And Jessica Gurley, who was the administrator for Superior Court, is no longer with Clark County. So they're in transition between staff members. So this will allow somebody to come in to do an analysis with the judges. And Krista Minsmeyer is the administrator for Juvenile, so she has been trying to assist them with this.
I have to tell you, that struck me too, Karen, and I don't know where, what the state has. You know, it's a branch of government. Don't they have, I mean, we have all these counties and courts. Don't they know best practices? It did strike me as odd that our local court would want a consultant.
And I think I just mentioned this, but their administrator, I am 99% sure if she was still here, they would not need a consultant. But they do not have an administrator, and the judges are not in the day-to-day operations of this type of work. They do receive definitely some guidance from AOC with regards to COVID and operations, but the judges are not, like I said, they're not doing day-to-day operations. That's really the administrator's position, and that position is vacant. And it looks like Chris was not able to continue to stay on with us, but I'm more than happy to have her follow up. And I did send also the staff report that has additional information for the council's consideration.
Well, if there is no administrator at all, that I think explains it. I do have a second question, dealing with the food safety backlog. There is, there had been discussion before about moving the restaurant inspections, which is a portion of that food safety, I believe, to being virtual and announced visits, as opposed to the in-person unannounced visits to restaurants that the public was more comfortable with, in some cases, anyway, those who voiced that concern. And they felt like it might yield more information on food safety. What is the plan for the use of this money? Is it going to change it back to the old processes for dealing with? Is it going to change it back to the old processes for dealing with the backlog? Or is it still going to be announced visits that are virtual?
Jeff Harbison, Public Health. Yeah, I'm sorry. Jeff Harbison, Public Health. I believe they're going to move forward with a hybrid model where if they can do remote inspections, they, they may, they may move forward with that. We don't want to do all of our inspections remote. We do want those onsite inspections when they are possible. With the Delta variant, we're just, we're not 100% certain on how this will look, you know, in a month or two months. Janice Koch, our Environmental Public Health Director is not with me, so I'm doing my best to provide what I can. I know we have a very large backlog, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there are some instances where a restaurant has had purportedly some issues. And to just continue those as announced visits that are, are virtual in nature seems problematic to some in the community.
Oh yeah, our, our preference would definitely be to have them onsite in, in person, which is best practice.
So how is this money going to be spent? Is it spent just for a hybrid model that is including a lot of that announced visit?
Oh no, this, this funding supports two project positions, Environmental Health Specialists 2s, which would do those inspections. Hopefully we'll be able to move to more of the in-person onsite inspections. I believe we are doing those. We're masking and using social distancing.
Okay, as long as we have Jeff on, I, I have a question about a public health, the, one of the things in the report for public health. Enhancing the Clark County's Public Health Emergency Response Readiness. And can you, I have the report in front of me and I've kind of read it. Can you give me a little bit clearer idea of what this is for? It's health emergency. So that, does that include other emergencies? Let's say we had an earthquake or tsunamis coming or something like that. Does that address any of this or is it just health related as far as pandemic or those things?
That is an excellent, that is an excellent question. So public health, many people aren't aware, we are a first responding agency. So if there's an earthquake, if there is a flood, you know, I served at the EOC when I-5 was shut down due to flooding north of us. Yeah, we are, we are first responders. So regardless of the public health emergency, we are engaged.
And Chair O'Brien, this is Kathleen, if I may. I'm not including this in this recommendation as I do think there, while I agree that it's important that we have the specific train to respond, it does encompass other departments and staff countywide. So it will be part of a countywide effort that will be coming back to the council.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions specific to this report? I don't hear or see any. Thank you for enumerating this and the staff reports. When I started it printing, it certainly, so anyway, good reading here. All right, then if we're, if we have concluded, do you need anything more from us, Kathleen, on this?
I think a motion and council support. And then this will come back as a technical adjustment or previously approved by the council in the next budget cycle. But if we could get a motion and a vote, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion.
So a blanket motion on all the staff reports, I think this is a good start. I don't know that we need to individually vote on each proposal, but I would make a motion to approve them all at this point.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this report, these funding requests for ARPA funding. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Going on to new business, I don't see any council reports. Going on to work session requests, are there any that don't appear on here?
There are no work session requests today.
Okay, is Lindsay with us and, and I, posia issues update?
I'm here, but I don't have anything this morning. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, before we leave this topic, because I, I had individually asked for a work session on specifically the earmark of $150,000 for Lake Vancouver. And I, I know we discussed it in our one-on-ones. I just want to make sure we, we do move forward. I know there have been a lot of side meetings and, but I think it's important. And it, it may only take a few minutes to have an update at a work session. There are really conflicting jurisdictional issues and this gratuitous earmark that we receive for the lake. I would hate to see it languish for too much longer. So I'm hoping we can have at least a brief update work session on it.
Chair, if you would like, I can provide the update that I provided council during one-on-ones at this time and the planned next steps.
Yes, please do that.
So I, staff and I did meet with Senator Cleveland last week, who was instrumental in getting that legislation passed for the $150,000 to go towards a long-term plan for Vancouver Lake. Vancouver Lake actually does not fall in the county's jurisdiction. It's between Department of Natural Resources and Ecology. She did meet with both agencies as well. I know for public works, we certainly want to partner and have a seat at the table to help come up with a solution. But they are strained for resources right now as well. So we're hoping that we can talk to the state agencies prior to another meeting to really help DNR and Ecology take the lead on this effort since they also have more resources available through the state. And then how that will impact that $150,000. Either we'll have to do some sort of MOU or inter-local agreement to pass through that funding to the right jurisdiction. Or the other option is the council could opt to bring that legislation back to Olympia and have them change that identified funding and where it goes. Because we're not in, have the full jurisdiction. We want to make sure that we're following the intent and that we have the authority. Senator Cleveland did suggest that we have a meeting with DNR and Ecology. She will also be bringing a couple of her colleagues who are involved with this. I've reached out to the city of Vancouver to see if they're interested. And I can also extend the offer to two counselors, so we don't have an OPMA issue, to have a seat at that table. We have not scheduled that meeting yet. I was planning on getting the two counselors selected on the September 15th meeting. But if you would like to do that today, we can certainly do that. And then once we have that meeting, we can certainly keep bringing it back to council time and providing updates to the council.
Okay, that, does that help, Councilwoman Edgier?
Yeah, I wanted it to be out in the public domain. I've had these conversations with Kathleen and I appreciate all the work she's done on it. I would volunteer to be on that committee as there are very similar issues related to what's happening with Lakemus Lake and Round Lake and Fallen Leaf Lake as well. I have a keen interest in our watersheds and improving our lakes, the quality of the clean water. So I would volunteer to be on that committee.
Okay, thank you. We are, if that, that concludes our business with the council today, except that we are going to go into executive session. One of the executive sessions issues has been removed at 10 minutes. But when I counted up, there looks like it'd be 60 minutes that we're going into executive session for pending litigation, 30 minutes. And RCW 4231101I for 20 minutes and 10 minutes for the same RCW. We're removing the one potential, or one of the, one of the 10 minute executive sessions for today. We will have an attorney present during this executive session and we will sign in separately. I'm going to adjourn. I don't believe there's any action afterwards. Is that correct?
Chair requiring, actually, this is Amanda Michael Brink with the Prosecutor's Office. One of those items will have action afterwards, so.
Okay, all right. Well, then we won't, we will not adjourn. We'll come back into this meeting to take any action that we need to take after the executive session. So having said that, we are going to go into executive session, sign into a separate meeting. I am going to allow for a 10-minute break and I hope that's all right. Let's take 10 minutes. So at 10:43, we will be back here in executive session, all right? Thank you. For August 25th, 2021, I believe we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to give the county manager authority to settle the Melencroft bankruptcy action.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to give the county manager authority to vote in favor of the Melencroft bankruptcy plan. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That concludes our meeting for today. We are adjourned.